This conference will now be recorded.
Alrighty, so everybody, welcome. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Biggest thing is try to keep your mics off until you're ready to speak or need to speak. That helps the most with the sound. I know for courtesy of the floor, we'll do a couple of things. We will ask you as we get to courtesy of the floor if you have something to talk about. There's also a chat feature on GoToMeeting. So if you are on your computer and you want to get courtesy of the floor and you want me to kind of kick it off as we go, if you want to shoot me a chat on there, I'll kind of put you on a list and then we can also do it that way. But I think we'll be able to pull this off and if we run into any difficulties, we'll just take it as we go, okay? Alright, Tor.
Thank you, Steve. Attorney Zader, was there anything you'd like to share with the group regarding the GoToMeeting process and any legal concerns or items that you want to address up front? Joe, I don't know if Joe's still on mute.
Yeah, I can't hear him.
Joe Zader? Maybe he might be struggling with the... Alright, well, Joe can chime in if he sees something that he needs to address in regards to any access to the GoToMeeting. Anything, Steve? Nothing? I can't hear you either, Steve, you're muted.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm muted. I don't know what's going on with Joe's. Let me message with him. I'll message with him, see if he can get back.
Okay, not a problem, not a problem at all. So I'm going to move right into our meeting agenda for this evening. The one thing I do want to mention, although I don't think I really have to do it at this point, we will have a courtesy of the floor like we do in all our normal meetings. And I think everybody has a name associated with their number because I'm looking on who's attending the meeting and I can see names on everybody's, next to everybody who's attending, so that's a good thing. So if there's anybody in particular in the audience this evening that would like to speak during courtesy of the floor, it would be helpful if you just send a meeting chat to let us know that you're interested to speak at courtesy of the floor. That way we can properly address you as we're going through the meeting. That would be helpful. So you can just send a chat. Steve's going to be keeping track of who wants to speak at courtesy of the floor. Alright, so moving right along in our agenda this evening. First for consideration under our meeting minutes, we have our meeting minutes from February 12th. This was our land preservation Board of Commissioner workshop. The meeting minutes were included in the board packet and on board docs. Were there any questions or comments from the board on those meeting minutes? Did everybody have a chance to go through those meeting minutes in detail from the board? I'll give everybody a chance to look at them. Was there, I know there's been a lot of information going back and forth. I was having some problems with my computer. So are we comfortable with moving forward with said meeting minutes? Or did we need to hold on any of these for further review? That question's for the board.
I think the only one that I would ask to consider to hold off on were the March 4th and 11th meetings. The audio was not on our board docs as they had been posting them all, so I don't know what was going on there, but I don't know how the other members feel about that.
I'm good with that too, Diane. I'd rather take a couple of minutes just to, or take a little more time to go through those meeting minutes so that we're all comfortable with them. So I would agree with tabling the March 4th and March 11th meeting minutes if we want to take a little more time to go over them as a group. So first though, on our agenda are the February 12th ones. Did everybody get a chance to review those? And did you have any questions on those February 12th meeting minutes?
No.
Any from Joe or Matt or Mike? Any questions or comments on the February 12th Land Preservation Board of Commissioner BOC Workshop meeting minutes?
I don't think they realize they're muted, Matt and Joe.
Yeah, I think the board can unmute your mics at this point.
Unmute the board?
Yes, you guys just have to unmute your mics, the board, and let me know if you have any questions or comments.
Can you hear me now?
Turn the mic off on your computer. Oh, he got muted. I can't hear you.
Alright, Matt, maybe Matt could send a, Matt and Joe could at least send a note or let us know if they have any questions or comments on those meeting minutes.
Matt, do you know which phone, which caller number you are? Hold it up if you want to. Alright, let me, alright, the board members, can you guys let me, actually, you know what, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to unmute everybody and then you guys can mute, please mute yourself or your phones because I think we're blocking the phones from being unmuted.
This is Mike Wall, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Mike.
Joe Zader, can you hear me now?
Got you.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me, Matt?
Yep.
After the vote, there are a few things I was going to mention very briefly in response to President Morgan's comment.
I did need everybody, if you guys have a mic open to mute it if it's not talking or not a board member. Sounds like we have these on in the background. Perfect.
Okay, we...
Let's just check.
Yeah, we're good. Okay, so at this point, we have the February 12th Land Preservation Board of Commissioner Workshop meeting minutes open for consideration and possible action. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments on said meeting minutes? If you're not certain or have some questions on it, I'd rather see us table it until everybody's had a chance for complete review if I can't get a response from everybody. I wonder...
You can hear me, I'd like to table it.
Alright.
Anybody hear me?
I can hear you, Joe. Yep, yep. So I would... Matt, are you good with tabling the February 12th meeting minutes?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Alright, so at this point then, I think until we have a little more review, we're going to table the February 12th Land Preservation BOC Workshop meeting minutes. Next on the agenda, we have the February 19th Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. Steve, could you pull those up on the, or whoever's doing them? So has the board had a chance to review the February 19th, 2020 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes? If so, I would need a motion for approval of said minutes if there's no questions or comments.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of February 19th.
We have a motion on the floor, motion on the floor from Commissioner Mobilio, a second from Commissioner Walk, all in favor.
Aye.
I should have said, we're going to do roll call votes. I think it's easier because it's hard to say who says what. So Renee, do you mind doing the roll call vote, please? Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. The March 4th and March 11th meeting minutes, we're going to hold over till the next meeting as well to give everybody a chance for a full review. And that will conclude consideration of our meeting minutes for this evening. We have no ordinances for consideration, so we'll move right into our resolutions. We have a variety of resolutions for consideration and possible action this evening. And the first is a resolution approving the sewer planning module for Harold Avenue. We have Jason Newhart and Mike Elias presenting this evening. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Jason Newhart from Spot Stevens &amp; McCoy. For those of you who don't know me, I am the Water and Utility Engineer Representative for Spot Stevens &amp; McCoy for the township. And the two planning modules that are up for consideration tonight for resolutions are requirements of the Act 537, which is your sewage facilities planning. The Harold Avenue module is for an existing, previously approved subdivision for five lots located at 1960 Harold Avenue. What you're approving is the resolution to allow DEP to amend your 537 plan to include those five new lots. The other one is for the Planet Fitness that's currently located in the Tillman Square Shopping Center, is moving across the street to the Kmart Shopping Center. And what happens with the planning modules is we need to approve a new allocation for their flows. In other words, the existing flows stay with the property, so whatever Planet Fitness is using stays with Tillman Square. We have to now approve the new sewage use on the Kmart Shopping Center Plaza. I'll take any questions if the board hasn't.
So, Jason, let's focus on the Harold Avenue first and work through that one and then we'll move on to the Planet Fitness one. So are there any questions or comments from the board on Harold Avenue?
My question on Harold, my question on Harold Avenue, is that a five-unit subdivision for townhouses or...?
It is for townhouses, Joe. There is an existing single-family house that was subdivided into five additional townhouse lots.
Okay. And what is the width of each townhouse?
I honestly don't have the plan in front of me, Joe. It's probably...
The plan was approved already, right?
It was already approved, yes. You're only approving the sewage facilities planning module tonight.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any of the board members regarding the sewer planning module for Harold Avenue? If there's none from the board, is there any questions from the public on this particular sewer planning module? And if you do have a question, probably the easiest thing to do is shoot us a note on the chat and then we can tell who's asking the question and then open the mic. Were there any questions from the public? Let me give it a minute here. I'm not seeing anything. Steve, you see anything?
I do not, Tor.
Okay. That being said, if there's no other questions, was there anything else from staff that staff would like to add to this particular resolution? I'm going to take that silence as a no. And that being said, do I hear a motion this evening to move forward with the resolution approving the sewer planning module for Harold Avenue?
I'm going to make the motion.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Seton, who is the second? Diane. We have a second from Commissioner Kelly, thank you. All in favor? We'll do a roll call vote, please. Renee? Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Thank you. Thanks, Jason. The next resolution, Jason had already presented on this one briefly, is a resolution approving the sewer planning module for Planet Fitness. Jason, you presented, unless, Mike, you have something else to add on this particular topic, I'll open it up to any questions from the board on this particular resolution for consideration.
I actually had a question for you, Jason. You had mentioned that the sewer capacity stays with the existing property. So if Planet Fitness is moving over across the street into the Kmart Plaza and they're only taking up part of that Kmart, do they take away part of that capacity for that Kmart, for that Kmart store? How does that work?
Good questions. So we had checked with the property owner and Planet Fitness is a tenant to the property management company and they did not want to sacrifice any of their existing flows for the Kmart building. So this is actually a new planning module that has already been reviewed and approved by LCA and will ultimately will be DEP once you approve this resolution tonight.
Oh, so that's interesting. So this is new capacity for that plaza because the Kmart's going to maintain the capacity for anybody else who might come in on the other side?
That's correct because Planet Fitness is only going to occupy a portion of the building, the Kmart.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, great. Were there any other questions or comments for Jason or Mike from the board on this particular resolution for consideration this evening? Okay, if there are none, are there any questions or comments from the public on the call this evening regarding this particular planning module resolution? And if you do have any questions, you can unmute your mics and you can send us a chat to let us know. I'll leave it open for a second. Alright, assuming there's no questions. Steve, you don't see anything that I don't see, do you? Alright. Do I hear a motion this evening moving forward with approving the sewer planning module for Planet Fitness?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Renee, could I have a roll call vote, please? Sure. Commissioner Walk?
Karen.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, thank you. Resolution passes. Thank you, everybody. Alright, next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution appointing Barry Isit and Associates as our primary residential inspector.
George, do you like to start on presentation?
Yes, very quickly, thank you, Commissioners. You may recall in January at the reorganization meeting, you all appointed CodeMaster as our primary commercial plan review and inspection service and Codemaster as the alternate for that commercial service. At the same, at the same time, you also approved Codemaster as our primary residential service provider, Code as the alternate. Karen's going to jump in here, I'm going to kind of segue into her, but there's been a change, there needs to be a change in that service. And the adjustment is actually necessary to transition the primary residential role and the commercial role of Barry Isit. With that, I'm going to ask Karen to jump in and talk to you about why we need to do this.
Great, thanks so much, George, and the board, and all the staff at South Whitehall Township. We really appreciate your help and cooperation in getting to this point that I'm talking to you here tonight. We made a business decision in the beginning of this year to enter an agreement with Barry Isit and Associates to take over our code inspection agency, as you know it is Codemaster Inspection Services. So we have that, that happened in January, we notified the staff, and then I think we were talking about this for the March meeting and then kind of everything happened. So here we are on April 1st. So what's happening and the reason this had come about is we had a shortage in inspectors, we had the Isit team fill in for some of our team and realized that we had a lot of great consistencies with them, they have a lot of great service, they have a number of inspectors to back up the team here in the Lehigh Valley. They've done an excellent job in being very fair and offering employment to our staff and also honoring all of our contracts, such as the one that we have in South Whitehall Township. All existing fees are honored and any service and operational process, they'll pick up just like we did with the same staff. So just any changes that will happen in South Whitehall Township? We haven't seen any issues in any other municipalities so far. We anticipate no changes and we're working through the transition with them for any kind of questions or to answer anything that you might have. I don't know how much more detail you want, I'm happy to open to questions or how much more detail, I know you have a lot on your agenda, but it's a long story, so...
Karen, thank you for being here this evening and joining us on this call and thanks for that report. I'll open it up first to any questions from the board. And even before that, George, did you have anything else you wanted to add to Karen's presentation before I open it up?
I would just say Karen made one important point, that Barry Isit will be honoring the same fee structure that you guys offer at the January meeting, so...
That's correct. I also believe Matt Walters is likely on the call as well, I think he's on the audio portion. So we do have a representative for Isit here as well, if there's any questions for them directly, but he can answer those. And you said that was Matt, Matt Walters? Correct.
I guess, I'm looking at some of the fees that are included in the schedule here that also have a number of visits included in it. I guess my question is, what happens if there are more visits? What is the fee for each other visit on each one of those?
I can tell you our current process for that and the number of inspections is something that the state asks us to provide on the fee schedule. And I can tell you currently that if there's an inspection that they can pick up while going to, while coming back for something, for instance, if they needed to look at something while they're there for something else as a reinfection. We do not charge for that, but if they're going back just for a particular item that had to be re-inspected, then that does incur a fee. But it's usually, I would say probably 80% of the time, a throw out a percentage, those inspections, those reinfections can be done while another inspection is occurring.
But, Steve, I'm assuming if there is those other 20%, there is a fee that would be included in it and that fee goes to, I guess, whoever is going to be inspected?
That's correct.
Okay, so what is, give me an idea, just what is the extra fee?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is on that schedule there and I'm sorry, I don't have the information you have there. I believe it's a...
I'm looking at the schedule, I cannot see it, I'm just asking, just curious.
Okay, great, it's a visit...
I see hour rates?
Re-inspection, 60 dollars per hour.
Okay.
So if they're there for a half hour, it's $30, for an hour, it's $60.
No, if you're gonna be...
Yes, there you go, thank you.
One hour minimum if I saw it correctly.
They're one hour minimum, okay, sorry about that. Each fee schedule is a little different, yep.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no...
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Karen. Are there any other questions from the board regarding this proposed appointment of Barry Isit and Associates?
Just a follow-up to Joe's question, are the number of site visits the same with this contract as they were with Codemaster? It's an identical contract?
Yes, we basically changed the logo, to be honest.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions from the board?
The other thing that I can read here is that this can be terminated anytime, if I correct. Yes?
Same setup as before?
Yes, I think that's correct. Typically, you reorganize every, annually, so I think this is a good opportunity to work with Barry Isit for, you know, a good solid period of time and then certainly a recessment could be made at the end of the year earlier.
I'm familiar with Barry's, they've been, they've been good, they have a very good reputation now. So, yeah, they're good, just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public on this particular resolution item this evening?
Yes, Lee Salt calling. Just a quick question, after December 31st, who is going to set the fees? Or is Barry Isit going to set the fees or is South Whitehall Township going to set the fees?
Steve, would you like to? Or George, would you like to chime in on that one? How the fee schedule is set after that?
Yeah, I was going to say typically we receive the fee schedule from the third-party agency and then we evaluate accordingly. We can receive multiple offers and pick the best that seems to work, but that's typically, typically what happens is we ask for their fee schedule at the end of the year, we evaluate it and then we offer it up to the commission recording room.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Since we reorganize every two years, does the fee schedule change once a year then?
This gets done annually, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the public this evening? Alright, that being said, do I hear a motion this evening to move forward with the appointment of Barry Isit Associates as our primary residential inspector?
I'll make a motion.
I think I heard a motion from Commissioner Seton, is that right?
Yep.
Alright, and I think I heard a, Diane, are you a second?
Yeah.
Second from Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? Roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for that presentation. Thank you, Karen, thank you, Matt. We look forward to working with you. Alright, thank you.
So I'm going to, we're having a little technical difficulty. I know Attorney Zader was trying to share a little bit of information, his mic is having some problems. So Steve, did you get some information that Attorney Zader wanted to share with the team, please?
Yes, I did. I'm chatting with Joe now. So earlier in the meeting, in the beginning of the meeting, when you kind of asked if this was a good, a good format for having this meeting, his response is, as I apparently cannot be heard in response to President Morgan's earlier entree, "While unusual, this virtual meeting satisfies the Sunshine Act, prior case law regarding public meetings, the recent guidance from PA Office of Open Records, and the pending HB 1574." And that's from Joe.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Joe. I know you can hear me, but... Thank you Steve, thank you Joe, I know you can hear me but can't speak, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, there we go, I heard you.
There he is, there he is. Great, I can kind of add to that. Go ahead, go ahead Diane.
Oh, I'm sorry, may I ask a question? The Open Records Sunshine Act governing with this declaration of emergency in the state, they have asked for township to make a complete recording of the meeting and make it available to the public. And I know at the start of this meeting, you explained that the recordings would be kept until the minutes are approved. And I do know our board discussed about a month ago in our public meeting, having our audios available on Board Doc for the public pretty much indefinitely. So I just wanted to see if the commissioners would like to discuss that and see as a board what we'd like to do. Given the circumstances.
I, I thought we agreed that the audios would be available and just like we were doing now, until they were approved, if they weren't asked to be kept, they would be deleted as well, they wouldn't be kept indefinitely. That, that was my understanding. Unless I, I misunderstood.
Well, I remember in our February meeting, there was discussion about putting the audios on Board Doc, so.
I agree, have we changed that in October? I don't, I don't know if that, if boards, if that changed, but keeping the audios indefinitely, I, I don't remember that that was something we were required to do. I thought the process was going to stay the same, we were going to have the audio available for, for listening until the next meeting and the minutes were approved. That, unless I misunderstood, that's, that's what I understood it to be. I mean, Matt or, or Joe or Mike, you guys heard different, that was my understanding.
I don't think we ever, I don't think we ever agreed to anything. I think it was just discussion that we had, it wasn't, we didn't come to a resolution.
Yeah, I don't think we were in agreement, there was a talk, there was a talk that the, the video could be available by request. I, 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 I don't think there was a decision made.
I, actually, I think what we talked about is from a procedural standpoint, we weren't really, we weren't changing anything at this point. If we're going to change how we manage and maintain the, the audio, I think we need to have further discussion on that as a group. And also, I, I know we probably need to advise the council as well on the best course of action with that. So I, I'm not sure Diane, if this is the, the forum tonight, that we want to have that discussion. It might be a little difficult on this type of call. Or if we need to set up a separate meeting just to, to have that discussion or if it's even executive material, I'm not sure. I'll defer to legal on that one. I don't think we made it, I have to agree now. We've talked about it, I'm not sure we had a final decision on that.
Okay, so for now, we're gonna leave it on.
Commissioner Kelly, if you're asking about today's, today's meeting, we can link today's meeting to a link on Board Docs after tonight's meeting, after the recording ends tonight. It just goes into a link, so we can link that to the Board Doc's agenda from tonight, tonight.
Okay, very good.
And then, and then that would stay there until the meeting minutes were approved? And then, just like we have set up now, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, we wouldn't destroy anything unless it was asked to be retained? Is that correct or we have to still talk about that?
Well, that's fine for today, we can certainly talk about that moving forward in another venue. This is not the best as forum to do that.
I think my recollection of that meeting was that we talked about either having more substantial meeting minutes or making the recordings available with, I think Diane, was that your recollection? We basically said one or the other would be preferable and then we just kind of ended the discussion without a resolution.
Um, I recall we said we would put them on Board Docs and we were going to make them public. So, and my memory might not be exactly right for that either, but I'm always open to having information available to the community. So we can certainly discuss that later.
This is Mike Walk. Um, I, I think it's, I agree with what Tori said a few minutes ago.
Somebody's tapping their pencil, somebody has to stop tapping or something's tapping.
Yeah.
Oh boy.
I don't know what it is.
Should I wait or continue?
No, no, go ahead Mike, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Tori said it a moment ago. This subject is sufficiently open due to either what we remember or whether we brought it to a conclusion or not. So I support the BOC should, you know, at an opportune time reconvene and restart this discussion. I think what everybody said is reasonably accurate. But I also remember, it was probably at the end of one of our sessions where we, we had to move to the public meeting. So we probably didn't close it completely.
I, I, that's.
Somebody's texting or someone?
Somebody's typing, I think.
Yeah, it's somebody online texting who's ever on the cell phone.
Yeah, okay, it looks like there's a, a message from a member of the public up there as well.
Um, well, I think we, we have some, some, Mr. Chaya had sent a note, he, he's asking that the audio minutes be retained. I think we have a lot of discussions that we need to have still as a board on how we're going to move forward with our retention of copies, what's required by law, how we're going to handle it moving forward. So as we all agreed, I think this, this deserves some more discussion. But I will say this, you know, in regards to the content of our meeting minutes, I, I think our content is more than adequate. And, you know, I, I certainly am not supportive of changing the, the overall content of the meeting minutes. I think, I think Tracy does a phenomenal job with meeting minutes. I think they contain exactly what they need to contain according to, according to the, the guidance from, from PSATs and, and other agencies that provide information on, on meeting minutes and how to maintain them. So I think we do need to have more discussion as a group on this. But for now, I think the way we're, we're processing our meeting minutes is appropriate and we should continue until we, as a group, make the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Um. Hey Tori, just, just so you know Tori, I had to mute caller 15, that's where that sound was coming from. So that person may not be able to talk until I allow them to talk. So that that person knows who they are and they can mute their phone, I'll unmute them.
Great, great, thank you so much. Alright, um, thank you Steve for sharing Joe's thoughts. And then also, we're going to move forward with the rest of the resolution this evening, resolutions this evening. The next resolution for consideration this evening is a resolution to proceed with the DCNR grant request for improvements at the Vista Park. So this evening with us, we have Randy and Mike Cookett. So gentlemen, I'll leave it up to you for the presentation, the floor is yours.
Okay, good evening, I'll just do a real brief introduction and turn it over to Mike Cookett, our Parks and Rec Manager. Prior to Mike getting here, we actually did a master site development plan for the Vista's Park. That's up in between Clauser and Chapman's Road, near the Upper McConge border and was acquired through the development of the Vista's HOA to provide open space recreation opportunities for the residents of South Whitehall Township. So two years ago, towards, during the summer of 2018, we, we had a number of public meetings, went through the required master plan process to make us eligible for a DCNR grant. And what we came up with was the big backyard theory. You're able to see it on your screen here, there's a, a number of nature-based play activities, some, some very low-impact trails, some re-grading of the lower tier of that field, natural slides, hammocks, a number of tree plantings. And then on the upper tier of the field, remaining that as a, a community open space field with a trail going around it for people that like to jog, walkers, things of that nature. So where we're at now is the fundraising stage for this project. And Mike's going to highlight a little bit about what he's been doing with the DCNR grant. I did review his, his narratives for that grant, he did a phenomenal job writing that. Certainly passed my test, I, I think, I think we've got a pretty strong application here.
Hi, good evening everybody. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces and I apologize, my camera's not working here. But as Randy said, been working on this for the past six months or so frivolously and seeking resolution to proceed with the 2020 DCNR grant request for the Vista's Park improvements. This will make the athletic field there ADA accessible, which it currently is not, and will bring a lot of new modern play to the area and will be a very, very unique park for, for South Whitehall Township and for the residents.
Thanks Mike, thanks Randy.
So what Mike has in front of you guys tonight is a resolution for consideration. This essentially, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but this essentially gives the township manager permission to go ahead and sign that grant agreement on our grant portal that we actually submit this grant on. Very standard process, this is what we've been doing with all of our other DCNR grants, nothing out of the ordinary here.
Correct, yeah, I'm sorry, I should have highlighted that. So for any DCNR grant from here and all moving forward, part of the DCNR grant requirement is to submit a resolution signed by the township manager here to proceed with the grant. We are seeking a $250,000 grant through DCNR and it's a 50/50 match.
Great. And this is, we would match this with any of our capital, capital program funding or what would the match be?
At this point in time, that's still kind of up in the air. We submit this grant, it's due in the next two weeks or so here. And we'll hear about, hopefully by Christmas time, if we were successful or not. And then there'll be another length of period of time until we're able to actually proceed doing any work. So we're looking at at least a year or so that we will continue to seek other grant opportunities. And then beyond, as far as the township side goes, we could have more discussions as far as if we could budget something in capital, if we can look for open space funding and what other opportunities there may be.
One other thing we can do with grants is DCNR actually allows in-kind services to be part of that match. So there, there could be some things we're able to do in-house, like some of the paving work, you know, hauling in some stone and material to, to build those trails that are in there. There's a number of things we can do in-house to help offset that cost as well and keep our labor costs.
Great. Thank you Randy, thank you Mike. Were there any questions from the board on this particular resolution? I have a question, Randy, you mentioned. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead Diane.
You mentioned that the park was acquired through the Vista's HOA, can you explain that process?
Yeah, so part of our development process, and I, I believe it's through SALDO, when there's a development that goes in, the developer is required to contribute fees in lieu of land or land. In this case, back when that development was built, the township at that time chose to, to take the land instead of the fees in lieu of. So we ended up here with a seven and a half acre park adjoining this new development. That's, that's actually a lot of, basically the main way, a lot of our parks have been acquired over the years.
But you're saying the land was actually dedicated to South Whitehall, it doesn't belong to the Vista's development?
That's correct, that's, that's correct, I apologize if I wasn't clear there, that's correct.
No, that's fine.
Property.
Okay, were there any other questions from the board on this particular topic?
Yeah, this is Mike Walk. Is it ever possible to apply for grants in parallel? In other words, while you're waiting for the DCNR response? Or is it customary or required for you to wait for their response?
No, not at all, go ahead Mike, you can take that.
I was just gonna say, we can absolutely create other funding opportunities and other grant opportunities before hearing back from DCNR whether it was a successful grant or not, absolutely.
Yeah, we reach out to some, some key partners as well. I know SPYA, South Parkland Youth Association, has expressed some interest in potentially helping to, potentially being a partner in this. Believe we got a letter of support from them, I believe the HOA is providing a letter of support. Again, we're always, we're always asking for individuals or organizations to help contribute to the, their nearby rec facilities or a facility that they use on a regular basis. In this case, SPYA uses this heavily for soccer. And so they've, they've expressed an interest in potentially helping with this project as well.
And by helping, you mean financially?
Yes.
An organization that can contribute financially?
Yes, they've contributed to a couple of our grant applications already. And this, this would be another one they're, they're showing interest in as well.
And what upfront cost is there for us to put this grant together and get it in there?
Nothing upfront cost, well, outside of doing a site development plan, which we, we've, we've done the planning process here back in 2018 with Penn Praxis. So those are some of the upfront costs, we've got to run small reports or PNDI report, which, you know, costs approximately $40. There's not a ton upfront that is, is actually spent on preparing for the grant application.
Actually, I'll just comment there that the PNDI report has been completed and the, the fee was waived for us because we are.
Okay, good, good.
And then if the grant is approved, are we, are we bound to accept it or can we turn it down? If we, if, the reason I'm asking is obviously parks are certainly a wonderful contribution to our community. But I think we can all realize that the place that we're in today in our community and in our world is very different than we would expect to be on April 1st. So as a commissioner, looking at our budget and, and looking at our plans for the year and looking at, at where we may or may not be in December, we've got an economic impact that is unknown with people out of work and what that may mean to us for our budgets, for our grants, for, for our revenue that we budgeted for this year as far as seeing those programs through. And then I also think about, I know that there's, the playground over at Covered Bridge Park is in motion. So I just have a lot of concerns from a financial standpoint that the hardships that are currently being placed on our residents and businesses. As I look at this, I'm, I'm wondering if this is timing-wise, a wise use of our time and resources? Or should we put a pause on this and reassess where we are budget-wise for the future once we are done with this pandemic? Because just today, the governor closed everything till April 30th. So now we're at least another month closed. And we don't even know after that if that will be the end or not. So I just have some questions in regard to that for timing.
Sure, and you know, the, the timing for, for us here is, we're rapidly approaching the grant deadline from the state. If, if the pleasure of the board is to push this back another year, we're, we're okay with that. We, we've got the narratives, everything's drafted already. I would like you guys to keep in mind though, before making a decision here tonight, that you do have four years to spend this money. This isn't something that would need to be spent in 2021, for example. Like Mike mentioned, we would be getting a notification on any grant application from DCNR likely in November, possibly December. And I've seen it go into the, the following year as well, but for the most part, they're, they're pretty, they're, they're pretty standard with, with releasing their grant agreements in November or December. But again, you do have four years to. um, again, you do have four years uh to, to utilize the funds for this and apply for extensions. We've done that in the past as well for uh some projects. We did that with the Jordan Creek Greenway. We were fortunate enough to get uh a grant extension from DCNR to see that project through. Um, I certainly agree with everything you said there, Diane. Diane, we're certainly in a interesting economic climate right now. Um, you know, I, I, I hope, I, you know, I'd like to believe we're gonna be in a much better place though by the time this project actually um is under construction, which would likely be two and a half to three years, I would say. By the time we get the rest of fundraising and, and actually engineered plans going out to bid, uh, we've got a pretty lengthy time here. So this is really the first step in um kind of starting to gather, you know, some, some big dollars that are needed to foresee or see through a project of this size.
So I, I have a, I have a thought. Diane, I, I absolutely, um, I, I, I don't disagree with, with your, your thinking, considering that the time that we're in. However, knowing that there's been a lot of energy and effort and feedback from the public and the neighborhood that's right there who, who truly do want to see this park to better their um, their neighborhood. I, I think the fact that we do have four years, like Randy said, and, and the momentum takes to get this thing rolling. Um, and the fact that if we defer on the DCNR um grant now, um, we may put ourselves in a position where we wouldn't be considered um as highly in the future. You know, my, this is just my opinion, but I, I would think we should continue forward if we find ourselves in a position where financially we can't do it and we have to disbar the project. We address it when we get to that point, but I don't think we should put it on hold now because I think the public has already had quite a bit of input on this, even um, you know, with the, the amount of work that Penn practiced it, um, I think we should keep the momentum and then a, address it if it, if it becomes an issue. Um, not before, but that's, that's my opinion. I mean, I'll, I'll defer to the rest of the board as well for comments and thoughts.
If I understand correctly, Randy, there's not going to be too much money or, or any monies out of the township at this point, or is there?
Not at, not at this point. Um, you know, we would probably be looking for some engineering money down the road, probably in 2021.
Um. But you don't need that for, for the, for the grant?
No, 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 no. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't take this to the next step until we knew this was gonna get off the ground running. So um, we, we've got the master plan in place, you know, that, that's step one. Step two is to, to start um acquiring some, some funds to get this project moving. Um, I, Mike Cookett, um, I do believe we can utilize some of the DCNR grant, maybe 10 to 15% for engineering. Um, I believe we can potentially use this grant for that. Am I correct there?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Uh, so that would be another avenue. Um, a-again, you know, we, we would have four years to do this if 2021 is not the year we all hoped it to be financially. Um, obviously, we, we could, you know, we could put, you know, press the pause button here and um, kind of limp through 2021 and do the necessary, the minimum amount of work to keep the project moving forward and then take a a deeper dive into it in 2022 and 2023. Um, but aga-again, it, it's entirely up to the board here tonight. We're just looking for some direction. Uh, but we do need to make a decision. We are rapidly approaching this, this grant application deadline.
Uh, we don't want to lose the grant, but that's for sure.
Well, if we can sit on this for a year or so, I mean, I don't, I don't see what the downside would be. I mean, there's nothing that's forcing us to start construction within the next few months. It would make sense to get the money when we can and then if we can't afford to pitch in until next year, then that's when we do it.
Yeah, that's correct. I'd imagine there's a number of municipalities in the same, same situation right now.
Yeah, this is, this is Mike Walt.
Hi, Mike.
Sorry.
Hi, Mike.
Hi. Uh, so thank you to Diane for raising the sensitivity, uh, you know, the impact of a pandemic economically on the township and the citizens. And thank you, Randy, for explaining the uh, you know, the cash flow really associated with the uh, the grant. Um, and that the, the timing of our expenditure, you know, would be later. Um, so I, I think, I, I think it's uh physical, reasonable, um prudent. Um, if we were to apply for the grant, uh with the understanding, of course, that um, whenever, whenever we get to that future milestone, uh, we haven't committed any township monies. You know, we would have to come together again and decide, you, you know, whether we proceed or not. But I, I want to take this opportunity. I was gonna bring this up later anyway, so I'll, I'll make it real quick. So if I just set aside the uh, the grant, uh, back to Diane's point, um, I, I think the township ne-needs to take proactive steps uh and be sensitive to the businesses and the residents. Um, we really need to look at the impact that a pandemic financially. I, I know that Renee and Steve are already do- doing that. Uh, but there may be some things that we can do proactively to he- to help out residents. Uh, so I'd like to, I like to do that. And in order to do that, I'd like to take a first step where our finance and budget committee meets with Renee and Steve and do that as early as next week. So, so that we can, you know, see where we stand as a status quo and talk about what we could do for the benefit of uh the businesses and residents. That's, that's a sidebar. We can come back to grants now and make a decision.
Uh, thank you, Mike. Um, we do have, um, if there's no other questions from the board on this particular topic, um, we do have a question from the, from the public. Uh, there was a question from Mr. Chaya. What would the fees have been instead of the land?
Uh, okay. Hi, hi, John. Thanks for your question. Um, it's, it, it's, it's been for a long time now, $2,500 per dwelling unit. Uh, so you would take that number and uh times it by the number of units in that development that was approved as part of that subdivision. I don't unfortunately know that number off the top of my head. I wasn't here during, during that development. I'm not sure if, if anybody else on the line knows how many units are actually in the vistas there, but uh, that, that's how you would determine what that fee would be there. I hope that helps.
I would just add, this is Joe Zader. I would just add to that, that a small number of the units in the vistas are in Upper McCongee, uh, some of the single homes that front on Applewood Drive. Uh, those would not be included for the purpose of the count with regard to the rec fee.
That's correct, yeah.
But the, I have a, I have a question, Joe and Randy. The, the rec fee, whether it, if it doesn't come in lieu of land and comes in, in, in uh, in money, it has to be used towards um, uh, park and recreation. Is that true?
That's correct. That's how our open space fund is actually um set up. That's correct.
So it, it would have to get back into that, into that program um regardless. So whether it comes in the form of land or whether it comes in the form of money, it has to be used for um park um and open space.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Were there any other questions um from the public on this before we make um a decision as a board?
No, Lee, hold here. Uh, just two quick questions. Um, Randy, which plan are you proposing? Is there a plan for proposed improvements that you have on the screen now or is it the one lower where it shows the levels of different soccer fields and, and things? Which, which one are you going, planning on?
The, the one right there with the multiple levels of soccer fields is what's currently there.
Okay.
Is the, uh, the big backyard, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
There may be some confusion. Steve, can you scroll back up to the top or the, that last slide? Can you go down one? Yeah, so right there, you see two sets of soccer fields. One's highlighted in red, the other's not highlighted. The one that's not highlighted is not part of this project. That's St. Joseph's. Um, that's their property there. So the, the red highlighted area is the parcel we're talking about tonight.
No, I understand that. I just saw the, the slide lower that had multiple levels of soccer fields. That's why I wondered if, which plan you were going with.
Um, if Steve, keep scrolling down, Steve.
I got it, Randy.
Is that what you're talking about, Lee?
It was down lower.
Keep going, Steve. Keep going. Keep going.
Keep going.
I think I know what you're trying to talk about. Yeah, keep going past these pictures. Keep going, keep going. Stop. All right. So that's, that's the existing conditions now. Um, so if you scroll down a little bit more, Steve, you'll see what it's gonna be regraded to. So there'll be a much more subtle um topography as you get down towards Chapman's instead of a, so the issue we're having right now in that park at that bottom field is it's soaking wet. It's difficult for us to cut grass. The youth group stopped using it. Um, even on a dry summer, it's still holding water. Uh, we, we've looked at that situation over and over again and um it was taken into consideration during this master plan phase and uh, this, this was, this is what came out of the public meetings. This is what came out of uh all those public sessions that we had.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, what is the total cost? Do you want to do the plans you want to do? What is the total cost for the project?
Mike Cookett, you got the budget in front of you?
Yeah, the estimated cost is $560,891.
Okay.
Um, obvious, that can change between now and, and 2022 when we actually look to, to put the wheels in motion.
And how much is the grant for?
Uh, $250,000.
So what we're, what we're proposing is to do some of this work in-house and continue our fundraising efforts, looking for additional grant opportunities here over the next year. So the, I mean, the end goal is to spend $0 on construction. That's, that's our end goal. Um, I can't make a promise that we're gonna get to that end goal, but we're gonna continue applying for additional grants. But one of the things a lot of these funders like to see when you're writing these grants is that there's um already a match in place. There's, there's other um players at the table, if you will. So it strengthens future grant applications. If we're, if we're successful with one, there's a good chance we'll be successful with another because that funder then knows uh, there's a very, very good chance that that project's gonna get up off the ground.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Any other um questions from the, from the public? All right. That being said, um, we have a resolution for consideration to proceed with the DCNR grant request for the improvement at the Vista Park. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion on the floor. I think that was Commissioner Sutton. Do I hear a second? I'll make a second. Second from Commissioner Morgan. Uh, can we do a roll call though, please, Renee? Commissioner Walt?
Hi.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Hi.
Commissioner Sutton?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi, and I wanna just um echo Commissioner Walt's um statements about um, you know, once this, if the grant is approved for us, that it comes back before the board so that we can reassess where we are um financially as a township before we make any more expenditures for this particular project.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Morgan?
Hi. Motion carries. Um, thank you, Mike and, and Randy. Lots of good conversation on this and um good luck. I know you guys always do a great job at finding the, the max amount of funding to, to make a great great um resource for our residents. So, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening for consideration, we have a resolution temporarily extending the payment deadline for the township of South Whitehall 2019. Final business tax returns from April, um, is that April 30th?
30th.
April 30th, 2020 to July 15th, 2020, consistent, consistent with the extension granted by the United States federal government and the International Revenue Service to federal taxpayers to respond to the state emergency currently in effect. Mr. Carr?
Yep, so this is exactly what you read. Uh, we just want to match our dates on tax returns with the federal and state now um due date times. Um, so this resolution will allow us to do that. So our businesses do have until July 15th and they will still have their extension time. Um, and so their corporate filing extension date also as normal. Um, so this resolution will do that. And also to give, it does um also allow us to adjust this date, like so if the Fed, the IRS comes back and changes their date again, um, this will allow us as a township just to automatically do that and not have to come back for another resolution.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Um, were there any questions or comments from the board on this particular resolution? I have a question, Steve. Okay, Commissioner Kelly, you wanna go first? Commissioner Kelly, ladies and gentlemen.
Um, okay, um, just a question. I know that our current date is April 30th, which is um two weeks after the federal date that gives businesses extra time. Um, have we given any consideration to extending this to July 30th to give them that extra two weeks after they file their um federal taxes to, to keep more in line with what we have right now with April 30th?
Yeah, I'm not even sure. Well, obviously, I was, it was long before I that probably made it the 30th. I'm not really sure why that's a, a 30th. Um, normally those dates are the same. Um, so I, I have extended it out. I recommend just extending it out to the IRS deadline. It should be fairly similar. And they still do have the ability, as I said, to extend out to their October deadline if they do extend their um corporate return with the IRS also. So they still have that ex-extra time.
And that would be without any penalties or fines if they were to extend it?
Um, correct. Through April, th- through July 15th, yeah, or through their.
Oh, you're saying through October?
Yeah, it's so, so currently a business would have to file an S, a- as of April 30th or July 15th, they would have to file an estimate with us um of their, of their taxes, just like they do with the IRS and the, and the state. Um, so they would do this, it would be the same process just on the 15th of July. Which they're all very well aware of that process, if they've done their, gone through it or if they have their CPA doing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walt?
Yes, um, I support this entirely. Uh, this is the type of thing I mentioned previously. This is probably the most, you know, clear and obvious example of something the township should do in order to provide some relief to uh the businesses in the township. Um, and I think there might be other examples and that's why I suggested we, we get together and talk about it.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add to what uh, to what Mike was saying. Um, I know this is kind of I don't know if ironic's the right term because we've been talking about a potential increase in the EIT uh as by vote for land preservation, but you know, that might even be something we can look at as far as a EIT holiday for um, you know, I don't know what that'll cost us. I mean, I know it's gonna be expensive, but that, you know, depending on where we're at in a couple of months, that might be something we wanna maybe consider as well. I don't know if we can do that via resolution or not, but um, I think then go along with what Mike said, possibly do something at the local level.
I, I think we have, um, conversations are gonna, you know, obviously, I think conversations are good on this to look at what our opportunities are. I think Steve and, and Renee um are gonna have to do some, some holistic overview on the status of the township, you know, based on um what, what the results of this pandemic are gonna bring to us um for the short term and then for the long term. Um, but certainly I, I see, just like you gentlemen and, and Diane, you had mentioned um had said that there'll, there'll be opportunities for us to kind of have to talk through them first. I don't think we'll be able to make those decisions this evening, but absolutely, if there's things we can do um to help um, help with the residents and businesses of the township, you know, the better off they are, the better off we are. So um, it's a win-win situation. We just gotta figure out how to make that happen. So I think that'll be some, some future workshop meetings brewing right there.
Yeah, so, so this is Mike Walt. Uh, Matt mentioned an EIT holiday. I have been thinking along the same lines. We just haven't had a chance to talk, uh, you know, the economic situation right now. It's just not feasible any longer to consider moving forward at this time. So we'll, we'll regroup and, and we'll see where we stand and then we'll talk about how to move forward in the future.
Excellent. Excellent. So are there um? Excellent. Excellent. So are there, um, any questions from the public on this particular resolution?
Tori, I do have one from Mr. Chaya. Um, it's a, his comment is, "Local tax requires a copy of Schedule C, so due on seven fifteen would be impossible to comply with." Um, I don't know that I agree with that, because the Schedule C would be completed with their other tax returns. Um, so I, I'm.
This, this is John Chase. So, so let me, let me tell you why I say that. So say, for instance, I file on July the fifteenth, and I drop it in the mailbox, so it's postmarked midnight, July the fifteenth. Um, I may or may not have done the, the local tax. So that was the reason why you have fifteen extra days. It, it was to give people a chance to assemble all their documents, copy them, calculate all of the things and, and send it in. Not, not always do people do it at the same time. And being a business owner, I can tell you that I don't. So that, I always thought that fifteen days is being very logical to give somebody a chance to assemble the documents that they need and, and, and get it paid and get it sent in. So I'm just saying that, consistent with where we are now, the thirtieth of, of July, as Commissioner Kelly stated, would, I think, be just being consistent.
Okay. I, I, I can see that. I also see that the local, your local EIT tax returns due the fifteenth also, and you need a Schedule C for that also, if you file, if you have a Schedule C, so.
Yeah.
That's, so it goes both ways. If we wanna change that to the thirtieth, and that's what the board would like, we can change that resolution. That's not a big deal either way.
As, as, as a business owner, it'd be nice to see it consistent, because it looks like you made the same accommodation without changing what we're used to. So, just a thought.
No, that's fine. I mean, I would, I would, I would, I would see. There, there's no difference to me whatsoever if it's the fifteenth or thirtieth.
So, I mean, if it, if it's accommodating for the thirtieth and it doesn't impact the, the township, or there's no legal issues with it, you know, I'm, I'm all for changing it to the thirtieth if that works. So, I, I would support that. Joe, Joe Zader and, and Steve, from a, you know, from a financial and legal standpoint, if you guys are good with it, I, I would support that.
Legally, there's no issue.
Yep, I'm fine with it from the township side.
Renee, do you have any comment or thought? Are you, are you okay?
No, I'm okay with it. I just think then if you wanna do the resolution tonight, that way you can move on the resolution, amending the date to July thirtieth.
Alright, alright. So, um, if there's no other comments from the public, um, uh, we, uh, I would make a motion that we, um, uh, accept the resolution to temporarily extend the payment deadline with the, um, modification to July thirtieth. And I'll make that motion. Commissioner Morgan?
I, I second.
Seconded.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Um, roll call vote, please. Commissioner Walk?
Hi.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Hi.
Commissioner Sutton?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan?
Hi. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, um, for that, that, um, presentation. And, um, hopefully this, this helps some of our local businesses and, and, uh, that are dealing with this at this point. So, good. Uh, we have no motions this evening. Um, under correspondence and information items, we have nothing, but I, I will reiterate, um, the township, um, as a whole and, and staff has been doing a absolutely phenomenal job at, um, uh, accommodating, um, the everyday, um, services for the township, um, remotely. Uh, you have been, um, posting as much information as possible. We've been posting information on the website and through, Renee, uh, if you wanna chime in, the different sources that you're posting the information. Um, as information becomes available, we've been updating, uh, to keep our residents informed and created a return call process that has been, um, relatively efficient across the board. So Renee, do you wanna chime in here, just to kinda share a little bit about some of the communications and, um, how things have been going with the township as a whole, um, in regard to, um, the, um, pandemic that's been going on?
Yeah, we did create, um, we're posting links to the agencies that are putting the information out. It's really becoming overwhelming, because every day there's some new guidance. Um, so we have, we are, have an area where, again, there's posting to the links to the COVID-nineteen situation. So that's all on the website. So, that's what we're doing. Um, but again, it's, it's coming out daily, so we're putting the links is the most, the easiest way for us to keep up with the changing agency's information.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's changing by the hour. But as far as the general services for the, for the township, whether it be, um, trash and recycling or, or public works, um, the, the township hasn't skipped a beat, and for that, we're very grateful and thankful. Just, um, please stay safe and healthy out there. Um, much appreciated. Um, so did, Renee, did you have anything else for correspondence and information items?
No, I don't believe so. Um, Planning Commission, but I believe we have another meeting the night before Planning Commission, so that, that will hold until the next agenda.
Alright. Um, we have nothing under direction and discussion items unless there was something anybody else had to share?
I would like to bring something up. All night long.
Please go ahead.
Um, Randy mentioned earlier, uh, when we were talking about Vista Park, um, about the distinction between fees in lieu of and dedication of land when a development is, um, proposed. And that's something that, um, I know we've been talking about, um, land preservation and open space quite a bit this year. And that's something that I, um, would like to talk about with our board, um, because by our ordinance, um, our open space to be dedicated is a legislative decision that falls under the Board of Commissioners. Um, but as our processes work in the township, I'm not sure where the Board of Commission actually gets to have a voice in that. Um, because by the time it gets to the BOC for, um, session, it's usually the final approval process. And at that point, we really don't have an ability to talk about whether or not, uh, land should be dedicated for a particular development. So, um, I know that right now, um, the Parks and Rec Board, which is an advisory board, usually makes that recommendation. Um, so I don't know as a board if we'd like to talk about that, because, um, moving forward with land plans, I think that's something that's important for us, even if we don't, um, get to follow through this year with farmland preservation. Certainly with each development, we have an opportunity to, um, provide open space. So, don't know if anybody would like to talk about that tonight, but I thought it was something.
I think the open, Diane, I think the open space versus contribution often, uh, has to do with the development itself, where it is, what kind of land is, and what the, uh, contribution is. Uh, it's, a lot of it is geographical, I think.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm saying it's a legislative decision, though, and by the time it gets to the board, the decisions have already been made, the plans have been engineered, and, and we're there to either approve or, or deny. Um, so at the point that we see it, we don't really have any input.
Well, I, I think, I think we, because we're legislators, we're not, I mean, I think, I think from, to get into the weeds on, on, you know, the, the geography and, and, you know, as far as the, you know, that, the prep work that goes into it, I think that that's what we rely on staff to be handling for us, to present to us on the best, you know, what's best for the township. Um, I'm not sure how far into the weeds you, you're, you wanna get with this. I'm, I'm not, I think from a process standpoint, it, it works very well. Um, I'm just a little confused as to where you think it's, it could be different, or it should be different.
Our ordinance reads, the Board of Commissioners shall have sole, I'm sorry, the, um, our ordinance reads, the Board of Commissioners shall have sole discretion, um, whether we take the options of dedication of land or fees in lieu of, or a combination of both. And I'm asking the question, when we're dealing with a land development plan, we don't have that, um, discretion then, because by the time we get to it, uh, we haven't seen it. So I'm asking a, a practical question that right now our advisory boards, whether it's Parks and Rec or Planning, um, are the ones making that decision. So I don't know how the board members feel about that.
Yeah, this, this is Mike. So Diane, if I understand this correctly, you're raising, uh, what is fundamentally a process question, which amounts to being a timing question, where we have, uh, one or more advisory boards making decisions we're not aware of. And then honestly, I don't know if, if, if this comes before the board explicitly. And I think you're suggesting that the board, uh, should ha- have this legislative responsibility, uh, and, and be part of the decision-making, whether it's a, a high-level issue or very detailed. Um, I, I, I think it's something worth considering. I only have one experience with this. I, I've attended only one or two Parks and Recs meetings. Um, and, um, I forget what development it was. I think it was the warehouses on, on, uh, over by eighty-four lumber. And, you know, what I, what I observed was, it was kinda like, hey, should we take the money or request, uh, you know, some open space with, within that development? And it was sorta like, uh, a fairly quick thumbs up from them. Um, I think Diane's saying that's something that the Board of Commissioners should be privy to and, and, and probably should make the decisions on. Is that right?
This all comes through planning. I don't, I mean, we're, it, it's not like, it's not like we know nothing about, I mean, this is also going through planning, and Diane, you're, you're involved with that. You, you would hear about these things. I was on Planning Board. We, we always had that type of information. So, I mean, it, it truly is a process question. And, you know, I think it's, maybe we just need to understand the process better before making, um, a broad sweep to consider changing it. Um, uh, that would be my suggestion, but I, I don't.
Can I just ask a question? Can I ask a question real quick? Cause I, I guess I just don't understand. So, is it, it's up to planning to decide whether we take the fees or the land dedication? That doesn't come before us at any point?
Well, let me, let me just read a brief part of the ordinance. Um, open space to be dedicated, land to be dedicated under this section, um, would be determined by the Board of Commissioners. Such, should, I'm sorry, should such land be deemed unsuitable by the board, the applicant may offer different land for dedication, fees in lieu of combination of both. The Board of Commissioners shall have, shall have sole discretion as to which of the aforementioned options offered by the applicant is acceptable to the township. My question is, the, a- as Mike mentioned, you know, the Parks and Rec see the plan and they make that decision. It goes to the Planning Commission, which I am a member, and the, the recommendation is given to us from the Parks and Rec, and then it's given up to the Board of Commissioners. By the time the land development gets to the Board of Commissioners, who by our ordinance are the ones that have the discretion to make these decisions, um, the plan is done, engineering's done, everything's done. It, it, a presentation is made before the board. And at that point, we don't, I mean, we certainly could say, go back to the drawing board and, and give, you know, make a park here or whatnot. Um, but that would just be very unfair to the developer at that point. Um, so I'm asking the question if process-wise, do we need to have these plans come before the Board of Commissioners early in the process so that we, um, are exercising our discretion as our ordinance would, would have us to be the ones legislating on a particular development, how land will either be dedicated, or fees will be given, or a combination of both?
Isn't this, isn't this just, isn't this just the same as in, you know, the US House of Representatives or the Senate, where you have committees that will consider bills, they'll draft them, they'll do whatever, and then they'll present them to the members, uh, to decide whether to vote on them or not. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, it's up to us, I mean, look, we, yeah, we may feel bad about sending them back to the drawing board, but, you know, that's why we're elected, is to make those hard decisions. So I, I don't know that, I don't know that I, I don't, I don't know that I'd wanna be involved in the nuts and bolts of planning and Parks and Rec. I'd rather have them do all that, come to us and say, here's our recommendation, but ultimately it's up to us. Um, and, you know, I, I, I think it works the same way as, as any governing body, um, state or, or federal, you know, someone, some smaller group is putting together the recommendations and the bills, and then the larger body is deciding whether to adopt them or not. I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Well, Matt, I'll just use, I'll use the.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna answer, um, to Matt's point. I agree with you. We do have the discretion, but once a developer has made it all the way to the Board of Commissioners to, um, present their plan to us, um, that's not the point in their process, moving through the system in the township uh, for land development, that that would be appropriate. At that point, everything has been done, and it would just be extremely costly to the developer to go back and reconfigure and re-engineer what they've done. Um, I'm not asking for anything to change. I'm asking us to uh, look at what we're, what we have in our ordinance for open space dedication, what it means. And that is, it is in fact a legislative decision by this board. Um, and yes, we could take, um, the advice of our advisory boards, absolutely. But by the time, it's a timing issue. By the time we get the plan, it's done. So I don't know how you would send back, for example, um.
So the only way, the only way, the only way, the only way, Diane, that you could potentially ask a developer or, or make a decision whether you want open space or contribution is before a developer even presents, presents to you a development. Because once, once he's engaged in making plans and submitting it, as you mentioned, it's too late. So the decision has to be made before they bring plans in, and you can't do that, because you don't know what's better for the township, whether contribution or open land. You can't.
Well, that's exactly to my point, that somewhere in the timing, Joe, that we need to be, um, looking at those plans as a board and deciding, because we're the ones that make those decisions for land development in the township.
Yeah, yeah, on Joe's point.
You look at it, I mean, at what point is this, is the developer already too, too invested to the point where it's not fair, as you mentioned, to ask him to go back?
Well, that's exactly what I'm asking. I'm talking about timing, that very early in the process and should be seen by the Board of Commissioners. And we decide. It's, it's by ordinance. I, you know, it's ordinance, um, page seventy-nine of our, three twelve dash thirty-six, Section C. I'd be happy to send you all a copy of it, but, um, it is what, what is in our ordinance.
This is Mike. To Joe's comment, I'll draw upon this one experience with the warehouses. I, I mean, when, when the developer submits its, its first plan, it's not, it's not too late. I mean, I mean, that, that has to be part of the process. They submit a plan, and then they get their initial feedback. I think Diane's saying that feedback should, on, on this issue, should come from the BOC and, and not from the advisory board. And we should give our input on the front end. I, I, I think it's plausible to, to make this change.
But if I could just try, one second. Um, uh, so I think, Diane, you're reading the SADO provision, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so there, there's a lot more that goes into open space decisions besides the SADO. There is also the comprehensive plan. There's also the zoning ordinance. Um, the zoning ordinance, depending on what a property's zoned, um, oftentimes prescribed to open space. It depends if you use an overlay or don't use an overlay. Uh, additional open space provisions might be applicable at that point. Um, I would suggest to you, if that, if the, the BOC wants to become the advisory board for Parks and Rec, um, you would basically dissolve that board in favor of the recommendations coming from you, or the decisions coming from you, as part of that current process. Because right now, the way it works is a land development plan comes in, it gets immediately distributed to all of our agencies, Public Works gets it, Parks and Recs gets it, Public Safety gets it, all the third parties, and our engineers get it. Uh, SSM gets it on the utility side. Everything gets distributed, and there are comments that are passed. Everything gets distributed and there are comments that are packaged up, basically, as a part and parcel, as it's going through the Planning Commission, to be presented to the Planning Commission, where they then kind of narrow that down and recommend what they think is the best solution for that provision. So I would just say to you, as part of that Parks and Rec input, if it's, and Joe, I don't know about the legality of all this, but if that's something that the commission wanted to take on, you would just simply take that on. But I wouldn't presume, I wouldn't suggest keeping Parks and Rec as your advisory on that, because then you're going to confuse it. Because you're going to get, you're going to get the Planning Commission getting two different directions.
I just don't think it's, I don't think it's a practical thing to do at all. And I think we should leave it to the Planning Commission and the staff to take care of it. I, I just can't see how, how we can, I just can't see the mechanics of how we can make that decision.
Hey, Joe Zader, from a legal standpoint, Mr. Joe Zader, if you could just chime in. Because I think from a process standpoint, there, this is, this has got some definite quirks in it. And I, I mean, there's a rhyme and reason for the way things are being done. And maybe you could give some insight into that.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Certainly, the process that the township chooses to use is up to the Board of Commissioners. To the extent the Board of Commissioners wishes to truly make the decision as opposed to being in a position where you really have no choice practically to accept the recommendations that came before you from Rec Board, Planning Commission, that is a process choice, it's a Board of Commissioners' choice. Any process that you choose to use here is going to be okay ultimately. But I think Commissioner Kelly made an important point. And that is that if as a board you truly are looking to make the decision as opposed to having to pragmatically accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the Rec Committee, then it would make sense in that situation for the developer to come in front of the Board of Commissioners. And that's because, to use Commissioner Wolk's example with the warehouse, even the initial plan, if it's an engineered plan, meaning a preliminary plan as opposed to a sketch plan, for a warehouse project, you're well into the six figures of engineering expense by the time you get to that first meeting with a plan. Consequently, you really need to, if you're going to implement a change to the process, such as been suggested as a possibility by Commissioner Kelly when she opened up this discussion, then in that situation, you really need to get the word out on the street that developers, you need to get a decision on this at the sketch plan stage before you spend all the money on the engineering and get to a preliminary plan. That's from a fairness standpoint, I would say that. The other thing I would say is that in looking at municipalities across the region, by and large, most of the times when a township wants to take land dedication, it typically, not always, but typically is for a larger development where the land that you can take by way of dedication is meaningful. And if it's not going to be a meaningful chunk of ground, typically townships would rather get the money and then apply those funds to the existing recreation and open space lands that the township has. And just as an example, the resolution that came up earlier this evening for the Planning Module for Harold Avenue, five townhouses. I don't have the SADO in front of me, but I venture to say that if you did the contribution of land for five townhouses, it would be so small, miniscule that the township would have no interest in it. And having many, many, many pocket parks throughout the township of small size, that would be a diversion of resources for maintenance. And you wouldn't have those funds then to make the parks that you do have really nice. And so that is a big factor that goes into consideration in most municipalities. So I think as a board, as you think this through and talk about with staff, talk about it with the Rec Board, talk about it with the Planning Commission, I mean, those are all factors that you need to consider.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
I think it's worth exploring further. I mean, I think it's, I don't know enough about the process and the details. I'd like to know, I'd like to discuss it more because I think it, I don't like anything being brought before us where we feel like our hands are tied because of previous decisions or advice.
Okay. So certainly it's going to involve some additional discussions. So there's another topic that would probably be more than just, you know, a short couple of minutes at a public meeting, which they need to consider a public workshop to talk about this and the opportunities we have moving forward. So I think that's a great idea, thank you. Okay. All right. Mr. Wolk, I think you had something, Commissioner Wolk, you had something you wanted for correspondence or direction in discussion?
Yeah, I actually have two. Don't be alarmed by that. The first one's really a question. So we're holding this meeting, I think it's going fairly well. You know, we only had one set of documents that showed some graphics and plans and that sort of thing. But we had one zoning hearing board meeting deferred by a month. And we have a Planning Commission meeting coming up on April 16th, I believe, where there's four, there's four major plans going to be reviewed. Dorney Park, a private resident named Robert Rue, Parkway Manor, and Ridge Farms. So I've been thinking and I've chatted with a couple of you about, how does one hold a meeting like that, a Planning Commission meeting, where the Planning Commission members are, you know, meeting virtually along with the public and have a, and there's so many drawings involved? How does that get done? So with a little bit of research, the state of Pennsylvania has provided advice in general in this pandemic situation that it would be reasonable and acceptable to postpone land development review meetings, such as the ones I described, until a pandemic impact is over and the public meetings can be held, like actually in person. And the postponement is reasonable because the meeting participants and public need to be able to review these land development drawings. So I ask, how, how will it be possible for South Whitehall Township to hold this next Planning Commission meeting virtually like this? Now, we realize, we can already fall back on the zoning hearing board case where to get that one month postponement, we had to get the agreement of the property owner to do that. And I suppose in this case, you know, the staff knows the exact timing for each one of these developments better than I do. But I suppose in maybe some or all of the cases, we would have to get the property owner's agreement to extend the schedule. So I don't know. It's a concern regarding the practicality of it. How does the BOC feel about the situation and the possibility of postponing, you know, the upcoming land development meetings on account of this logistical situation we have where we can't see the drawings?
Well, I, my, in my opinion, I think if there's a way to do it, we certainly wouldn't want to stop anybody who's been proceeding forward. If there's a way to manage the meeting and have the drawings available, and I mean, I'll leave that up to George or whoever who might be able to explain the logistics of those meetings. I mean, we all just said in the beginning of this, you know, we don't want to stifle, you know, anybody who needs to move forward with, you know, their business or growth or however they need to do. So if we're, if we're going to suggest putting all these things on hold when maybe we don't have to, I don't know, I don't know the logistics. I don't know how they're going to do it yet, maybe George can explain that. I'd rather see us continue with status quo as best we can. There is no status quo, but continue with process as best we can if it is feasible. That, that would be my opinion, but, I mean, that all depends on how you're going to logistically hold the meetings. But I'd imagine other municipalities and townships are continuing to manage their planning requirements and needs as well. So there must be a way to do it. George, do you have any input on how that's going to be done or thought?
Yeah, I mean, there's still some pending. I know the APA chapter's been working on legislation to talk about, you know, something similar to the Extension Act that was offered several years ago or many years ago. All I can tell you is we have kind of, almost, I want to say stopped because I don't think we're allowed to do that. But I, we, before the order, or when the order came out, we did instruct anybody that was thinking about bringing in a new land development to reconsider that and wait until after some legislation came out of the, out of the, out of Harrisburg and so forth. So the ones that we're talking about now are all ones that came in before that order. So I think, you know, it gets back to exactly what Commissioner Wolk said. You know, if they want to grant us an extension, they can do that. I, you know, I defer to Joe, I believe that's their, that's their call. We could certainly offer that opportunity. I know one of those projects for the Planning Commission did pull already, but they, you know, they don't intend to, I think, sit back too much longer. I think they want to continue forward with it sooner or later for the most part. So I know other municipalities are doing it basically the same way we are. And the format would be just as you're seeing it here, where the, where the plan would be presented virtually and the Planning Commission would go through their process. So that's about all I can, all I can tell you. But we can certainly reach out to all of our land developers and see if they'd be willing to grant an extension. But as you know, we have, the MPC does put time limitations on the, on the decision-making process. So, but we certainly can do whatever you think that we need to do.
So to Mr. Zader, or maybe George, maybe you are aware, has there been any legislation regard, I'm sure this, we're not the only township dealing with these land and development plans in light of all these shutdowns? You know, our staff, are they, I know a lot of them are working well. And so I know the packets that get put together and all the work that is done behind the scenes before it comes to any of the boards, you know, that's certainly a question that we need to ask our staff if they're able to.
I can address that, Diane. There is legislation currently pending, House Bill 1574. At the beginning of this meeting, the comments that I had that were read by Steve Carr, I had mentioned 1574 as pending legislation and that the conduct of this virtual meeting was in compliance with that pending legislation. One of the tenets of that legislation, which as I understand it, has passed the House but has not yet passed the Senate and therefore has not yet been signed by the governor, that would give the township a reprieve as it relates to the automatic requirements that apply under the municipality's planning code. What George said a few moments ago was correct. At present, unless we have changed legislation, it will require cooperation of a developer granting an extension to the township as to the timetable authorized and directed under the municipality's planning code. And if we don't get that type of time extension and we similarly do not conduct at least a virtual meeting, then there is the possibility the plan would be receiving what's known as a deemed approval. So I think cooperation at this point is necessary for the developers, but may not be required if that legislation passes.
Joe, my question would be, does that apply to land developments that are already in the pipeline or preceded the initial Governor's Act and this legislation? Or would that just apply to land developments that come after that legislation's approved?
Excellent question. And I think we just have to wait and see what the final legislation is that passes. And at this point, I guess, because it hasn't passed and hasn't been signed into law by the governor, we don't know what changes might be in the Senate version and whether it has to go back to a conference for the two houses of the legislature to work out. Just don't know that yet.
Okay. So Commissioner Wolk, did you have a part two to your question?
My number two is a, is another subject. So are we closed on this one? We've got Joe Zader's advice. What I heard from the discussion was carry on. Joe Zader told us there's some pending legislation that may shed a different light on this, but we should carry on. Is that what I heard?
I think that's a good summary, Commissioner Wolk, yes.
Okay. I'll go, I'll go to the second item. It's actually easy because it's simply a request to accomplish something we agreed to back in February, but we've been delayed due to the pandemic logistically. So at the February 19 Board of Commissioners meeting, we agreed that Renee Bickel and Steve Carr would provide the Campus Renovation Project Status Report with the cost forecast. And it would be sent to the BOC before the March 18 meeting. We'd send questions back, they would prepare answers to the question and give us those answers on March 18th. But the March 18th meeting was canceled. So this is simply a request to Renee and Steve to please send the Campus Renovation Project Status Report and Cost Forecast to the BOC. And with the understanding that there's been a lot going on, I think it'd be perfectly fine if you would send the report that you were going to present on March 18th. That would, that at least would keep us informed of the status of the project when it was put on hold.
We can do that, Mike. Yeah, I can, I can, I can give you a quick, quick update. A lot of the demo is complete. That's kind of where the stoppage is right now, like where they are. So from a pricing standpoint, everything's pretty much the same. We don't know of any, anything significantly out of scope at this point, but we can, we can send that over also. The timing obviously is completely up in the air now. So we're waiting to see if, when they can get restarted and then regroup at that point in time as we get into that timeframe.
And once they do, once they, once they find that timeframe, the project timeline will be redone clearly to reflect the stoppage.
Right. So let me raise one other related point. And I actually think it would be better if you don't even try to answer this. But maybe when we get together, it'd be interesting to know what is the nominal, I mean, approximate monthly cost impact due to the delay? And that could be cost, you know, that boil may incur or the all of the contractors may incur. And then with that, it'd be interesting to know whether there are any force majeure clauses as part of the contract and whether this pandemic would be defined as a force majeure event or not. And that would determine, you know, who's responsible for certain costs. And I guess as I say that, it would be very beneficial for Solicitor Zader to give some advice on that subject. Once we get the detailed information. Go ahead.
I'll be glad to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Was there anything else for, for staff or for the commissioners for direction and discussion items?
I have one more thing to add. Under Old Business, we only have the one item. And I know that there's some things that we've talked about as a board since January, some of them being our website update. And I know we've also discussed having a web, I'm sorry, Facebook and Nextdoor account. I know at our meeting in February, Renee was about to get a quote from the website company and also was looking into legal wording to establish a social media for the township. And I would wonder if we could put those under Old Business as well as credit card payments for utilities so that that's something that we can review at each meeting and watch the progress of that and hopefully get those matters kind of squared away sooner than later.
Yeah, Diane, we do have most of that done. We're just kind of holding and not necessarily thinking that this format sometimes is necessarily the best to go over some of the things. So we can circulate some of the information in advance. But, but again, deadline for. for credit cards was June 30th, um, and we can have an update on that at the next meeting. Steve can do that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to suggest that we put them under Old Business just to keep them fresh for all of us.
We could either.
Make one comment on the website is I, we did get quotes for a new website and I asked because of the financial situation right now to not move forward or moving forward because we don't have it budgeted and obviously we're not going to have the revenues we had. So we're, we'll look at that as we look through the whole financial picture going forward.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, um, we already touched on Old Business. Assuming Renee, we don't have any new information on where's Dan. We're still waiting on the permit, um, information, which I would imagine is going to be on hold for a while now.
Yeah. No, we have not heard from them about it.
Yeah. DEP's got their hands full right now, so. All right. Um, this is now the opportunity for Courtesy of the Floor. Steve has been so kind as to keeping track of the ladies and gentlemen that have interest in Courtesy of the Floor. So Steve, I'll let you introduce in order. The same Courtesy of the Floor, um, uh, applies. So please keep it to a non-agenda item topic and if, if at all possible, and we are going to try and recognize, um, the limit to the amount of time for Courtesy of the Floor out of respect for everybody on the call. So Steve, I will let you introduce the first, um, on the floor. I can't hear you. Steve, you're on mute.
Or my, my, how about that, Mike? Everybody in my house can hear me right now. So I will run through everybody who has messaged and then if, at the end, if there's anybody that's just on the phone call, we'll ask them to, um, to go ahead. So, uh, the first one we had was Mr. Brian Height.
Hello, Brian Height of 1273 Eck Road. Uh, I have a question in regards to the right-of-way agreement proposed last year between the township and myself in relation to the frontage of my residence and the upcoming realignment of Eck Road brought on by the Cracker Sport Road Warehouse Projects. Basically wondering what the current status is of this right-of-way agreement. I guess it's probably a question more for Renee and Joe. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Um, I am not sure. I believe Jennifer Aldifer was, had communicated last about it, so let me try and pull it up and see, um, because we had sent your maps over to her marked up and hi. George, you might know too. I think you were in on an email. And I think Brian emailed.
No idea. No idea.
So let me see. Brian, I will follow circle back with Jennifer tomorrow and then I'll email you.
Okay, that's fine. I, I figure everything's in chaos right now. And I also wanted to say that I've been through about 12 of these virtual meetings and this one was the least train wreck so far. So you're doing good.
Excuse me, Brian, you can't be talking about the, the LVPC one, can you? Because that was, wow, that was great.
It got better when it ended.
Yeah. Would, you know what? Overall, um, these virtual meetings, once you get the hang of them, they, they seem to go pretty smooth. Um, just a little, a little tidbit, um, I sit on the LVPC and they have, but we have like how many, there might be 30 commissioners. So, and you have to do a roll call though for every single thing with 30 commissioners. So you can only imagine how long that takes. But I give staff a huge, um, round of applause from LVPC because that's, that was not an easy thing to put together. So good job on that one. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Who do we have next? Mr. Carr?
We have Mr. John Chea. Hope I said it correctly this time.
You said it correctly. Thank you. Okay. So, um, I've been listening tonight and, and I know this has been a challenging time for the board. And, um, so I wanted to share something with you. I work with a lot of companies, national, international companies. And at times of crisis, there's a couple of things that are really, really important. And one of them is a set of core values. There's a dog barking. There's a set of core values that I think are really, really important. So I'm just going to read them to you. They're, they're the Rob LeBeau core values. And, and I'd like you to just, just think through as I read them. And, and the better we can all apply these as we go forward, the, the more successful we're all going to be. The first one is treat others with uncompromising truth. Lavish trust on your associates. Mentor unselfishly. Be receptive to new ideas regardless of their origin. Take personal risks for the organization's sake. Give credit where credit is due. Do not touch dishonest dollars. And put the interest of others before your own. I offer those as just things to think about because life is crazy right now and they make me helpful for guidance. We all need each other to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Uh, next up is Mr. Robert Hodges.
Hi, it's actually Monica Hodges. We're on Rob's computer, so if that's okay. No, no, that's okay. That's okay. Um, I guess this Courtesy of the Floor is non-agenda items. Is that correct?
It is. Did you have something that you mentioned earlier and didn't, that, that's okay?
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether I should type in the comments or, you know, wait for Courtesy of the Floor, but I have three things I wanted to mention. First of all, I wanted to thank the commissioners and staff for making this meeting possible for your citizens. I can't tell you how much we appreciate it and we're really grateful for the opportunity to participate. So thank you. This is really huge. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is, um, Commissioner Kelly brought it up about more involvement in land development. You know, I don't, I don't know exactly how this process works, but I especially wanted to thank Commissioner Mobilio. You brought up the fact that, you know, you mentioned the hands are tied and, you know, the citizens are tired of hearing your hands are tied. So any, any way you can pursue this and go forward and, and just keep the potential for pursuing it open, I know is greatly appreciated by your constituents as well. So thank you. Um, I wanted to add another thing. I, I feel like all audio minutes should be retained. And I also wanted to take it a step further. I think every Board of Commissioner's vote on issues should somehow be recorded. I think it's just part of transparent, um, government. And I know things have worked in the past and things have been done a certain way in the past, but there's always a way that we can improve going forward. And, um, this meeting right here is manifestation of that. So thank you. And the last thing is, um, is there any way to make, make the board docs a little bit more intuitive for, for people? Because right now it's about an eight-step process just to get to, um, the agenda and the minutes. And, uh, I, I know someone had mentioned that, uh, right now there's nothing going forward with, uh, website design or improvement. I understand that. But is there any way that we could make that eight-step, uh, process to board docs just a little bit easier for the general public? Not everybody is, is savvy and after four steps, five steps, some people give up. So that's basically it. And I wanted to wish you all well, stay well during all of this, be well. And, uh, thank you for, for doing what you're doing for your, your citizens.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. All right. And we, we certainly will look into how we can make, um, uh, the board docs more intuitive and, and easier to breeze through. So, um, well, more to come on that for sure.
May I make a comment, Tori? Just a follow-up. I know Parkland School District has a very easy board doc setup on their website. If we wanted to look at theirs just as a template, um, they don't require a password. You just go on, click on the meeting and it's right there. I agree with Monica only because I had, actually had a couple of residents call me and ask me how to find, um, the minutes and I had to walk them through over the phone. And it's a little bit tedious if you're not used to it. So, um, I appreciate the comment.
Absolutely. Yep, we can look into that for sure. Anything to make it easier is, is a, is a benefit. So absolutely. All right. Mr. Carr, who do we got next?
Um, the last one I have on my list currently is Mr. Lee Salt.
Good evening. Thank you, Lee Salt, 3731 Manchester Road. Just two things. Number one, uh, first of all, thank you for, uh, having this and inviting the public to this. We appreciate this and this is very useful and I'm glad we can do this. We can't meet in person to do this. One thing that Diane, Commissioner Kelly said was that about the, either getting money or through the land process, is there a way that the Planning Commission, just an idea, you don't have to comment on this, but is there a way that the Planning Commission in the middle of the process could come to the Board of Commissioners and say, this is what's going on, this is what's happening? Give me, give us your input on this and a direction that you'd like us to see the Planning Commission go on. It's just an idea that maybe, uh, something that possibly could happen, um, in the interim instead of having, again, procedurally law, I'm not sure how that would work, but if that would be an idea. The second thing I had was, uh, Commissioner Walk had said that there's a planning commissioner, commission meeting coming up, um, this month. And there was four items on the, on the agenda. And one of those, he said, was Ridge Farms. You know, we're in a different world than we were three weeks ago, two weeks ago. Um, I think personally, I think if there's a way that we can hold off on having any planning going on at this point in time, um, is, is more beneficial than having things going through and having things where the public doesn't have input. You know, the comment was made by I think Mr. Height that there was a call and you, Chris, Commissioner Morgan said that you had 30 or 40 people on the call and it was somewhat disastrous. I couldn't imagine what a phone call would, a, a, a go-to-meeting session would be if a Ridge Farms was on the agenda. Um, I don't know if there's a way you can work with the developer and the Planning Commission to push things back until this whole thing kind of blows over. I just think it would be a, it would be a, somewhat of a disaster if you have a Ridge Farms meeting or go-to-meeting. And if not, and if the public doesn't have input, they don't feel like things were done fairly, you're going to have a revolt in South Whitehall Township about something that fair process wasn't happening. Just putting that out there for everybody to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Um, much appreciated. So yeah, we, we definitely have to have some discussions on, on process and procedure and how we're going to move forward with definitely big topics like the one you had mentioned. Um, thank you for your comments and thoughts. We'll certainly have to take that under advisement and see how we move forward. Uh, was there anybody else?
Sorry, Christine, Commissioner Morgan, one more thing. I just, at this time that we, we have, I just hope that everybody out there, our, our township employees, our police, our EMS, everybody else out there, and, and is, stays safe and stays healthy. So we can all hopefully one day in the near future, um, get together and meet again as we have been in the past. So thank you.
Thank you. And that was a very kind thing to say. You can count on it. We will, we're going to come out of this stronger than ever. I have no doubt. So, um, the, the public and the community has really come together on this one and, um, we have a community that we should all be very proud of. And that community is, the, the township employees are part of that as well. So, so thank you. We appreciate that very much. Um, and I, just, just for the record, it, you know, the, the meetings with many people on them, I wouldn't, they weren't a disaster. They were just a bit chaotic until things got in order. But, um, I don't disagree with you. It is, it is harder with a lot of people on the calls, but, um, we will have to take that under consideration. So anybody else? Steve, do we have for Courtesy of the Floor?
Um, I do not have anybody else that messaged me. Um, I don't know if there's, I, I believe everybody should be able to talk if they, they want to, if they want to unmute themselves. So if anyone else has Courtesy of the Floor, let us know now.
Anybody? All right. Nothing being said, I will note that our invoices and our purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by our township manager and our director of finance. We do need a motion this evening to authorize that our checks be issued to pay our bills is tabulated. Do I hear said motion? A motion. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Seton. Could I have a roll call vote, please, Renee? Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio? I'm hoping to hear you. I think Matt Thornton might be, I don't, is he still on the call? He, he gave a thumbs up. I see.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I was on, I was muted. Sorry. Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. A motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we have no executive session planned for this evening, so I do, um, need a motion for adjournment. Do I hear said motion?
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to add one comment. Um, we, do we need to state for the record that we held executive sessions over the last couple of weeks?
Actually, that's a very, very good point, Diane. Um, and I don't have the dates in front of me to give the exact dates for those executive sessions.
I recommend the minutes, just note that there were prior executive sessions and at the next meeting, the times of the, the dates of those meetings can be, uh, put in the record then.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up, Diane. We will make sure that we have them in the meeting minutes for the next meeting, um, so that we can recognize those by times as well. Thank you. So I do need a motion for adjournment.
A motion.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Walk, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not sure. Let me think about it.
Thank you, everyone. Stay well.
Stay well, everybody. Absolutely. Have a good evening. Thank you, staff, for putting this together.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Diane.